Good evening, everybody. This is the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting for Thursday, February first, two thousand twenty-four. I'm supposed to announce that this is being recorded by Area fifty-eight and can be viewed, well, in a couple of days anyway, on YouTube. We are located in the Selectments Meeting Room in the Town Hall at four ninety-nine Plymouth Street. First thing I want to ask is if everybody's okay with the agenda and if I can have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. We're gonna start with the first appointment. We have Kevin Grady from Grady Consulting. Do your thing.
Will do. Um, I'm here with Kerry and Dennis McPherson. They have this property under agreement. Would like to develop the property as a self-storage facility. I have prepared conceptual plans and, you know, in discussions with them, they thought it'd be a good idea to come in and say hello, to talk to you guys ahead of time and try and vet out any major potential issues or suggestions that you guys may have before we get into specific site design, spending money on me to design it and then redesign it.
But that's all good, right?
So, so, uh, that's basically the reason we came in. I, the site is in the industrial district. Storage isn't allowed use in the district. I did contact the, uh, building commissioner and via email we agreed that it's not allowed use. So, we, we checked that box. Um, the next item would be site plan approval through you guys. But I'll just briefly describe what they're proposing to do here. We did a few concepts and this was the one that owners, uh, interested in, but, you know, we rotated the buildings a few different ways. And tried some different sizes here and there. Basically, we, initially I had a single entrance down here. What they would like to do is have the entrance at this end in front of the office just for, for access. So, s- single entrance for now. I show emergency vehicle, fire, engine access. They can get all the way around in and out. Did some nice, uh, wide curves here to allow for that manoeuvre, those maneuvers. We have a twenty-four foot wide lane all the way around the perimeter. Um, and I believe that's what I have, yeah, twenty-four feet between each building. So, there's some long aisles. So, they're proposing twenty-foot wide buildings approximately thirty-four thousand square feet of stowage. I forgot the R here. I'll get that by the time we, uh, have a full set of plans. They're basically just looking to do typical metal storage buildings. That's a generic, uh, view, but they don't wanna do any labored colors. We talked about that, I think, uh, I don't know specifically, but probably not fire engine red.
You're right on the edge of town, so there's really not much there across the street, but it's a little further back, further north, right? The, uh, residential housing?
Yes. Um, so I think that, what is this, Old?
Uh, Old, Old Palma Middle Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think that's the closest residence, this.
Well, there's a couple to this, to the south of them.
Yep.
Two, two or three on the left, yeah.
Okay. The Electric Easement Edison is right here.
Yep, yeah.
Um, and then, so they're, they're right in between the Edison Easement and the Town Line.
And the Town Line.
Let's see. So, we obviously have to drill down and do stormwater, but we left, uh, room between right now, the fifty-foot no disturb buffer that conservation will have, and the edge of the pavement. Um, we'll probably do some subsurface stuff out here depending on the elevation we set all of this.
Everything within a hundred feet has to be two feet above the center line of the road, right?
Correct. Um, so, Webby Engineering worked on this with the current owners. These guys have it under agreement. We have some of their data. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna update that with our own survey.
Mm-hmm.
Um, following this meeting. Uh, so, yeah, we'll elevate that two feet. I think we'll need some elevations from groundwater for stormwater and for septic.
Septic.
Webby Engineering did do park tests out here, so that is all set. I don't think there's, uh, water out here, right? There, there's no town water, so.
I don't know if it goes up that far.
Yeah, I don't think it goes up that far, yeah. It stops down around Old Palma Middle Road.
Okay. I'll contact the water.
But that's my recollection, but I don't hold that.
I know, uh, Webby, I saw that they did some concepts here. I don't know if they, if any projects ever actually made it in front of you and had any, um, issues or.
No, well, I've been on the board, I don't know.
Okay. One of the things that I wanted to discuss was traffic generation. Um, I know that we're supposed to, or that the board's supposed to find that we provide circulation and there's not a major traffic impact to, um, Mount Ponce Street Route fifty-eight. I was wondering if we would need a waiver or if you would require, um, traffic, TIA on here, traffic impact assessment. And these are typically low generators.
It's not a lot, not a lot of traffic in one of those places.
Right?
No.
And this, this is a.
But it is, uh, it is a pretty fast thoroughfare.
Yes.
Where, you know, it will impact some, you know, every time somebody turns in, it's gonna.
Yeah, we'll have to tap the brakes a little possibly.
Do you have to turn lanes going in or anything?
Um, twenty-four foot wide, twenty-foot wide entrance, twenty-foot radius, and then third is getting in here. I think that turning is gotta be pretty easy as far as site distances. We're on the outside of this curve. You can see pretty far this way. And you're gonna see quite a ways in this direction as well. Um.
Are all of your other concepts involving seven buildings?
So.
You know, you, you, the building positioning, but pretty much it's seven buildings.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yes. At, at this point, yes.
What's the square footage of the largest building?
Um. Is it five thousand square feet?
Okay.
Then long and narrow.
Okay.
Yeah, so five times seven, really. So, no sprinklers.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
No sprinklers or sprinklers, I'm sorry.
No, seventy-five hundred is the threshold for sprinkling.
Yeah.
And you've got your fire separation. You've got plenty of room between them.
Yep, twenty-four feet.
And it's all gated?
Yes, it's to be gated and fenced, yep, exactly.
Twenty-four hour access?
Is that what you intend to?
I'm aware of twenty-four, though. It'll be.
I know, which, you know, punching a number in your logbook.
You can, but I think we'll keep it closed overnight. Then with ten o'clock at night would be the, we'll come up with something, but I don't know what that is yet.
Lot more management to keep it open all night, right, or, or.
Are you gonna have outside storage? Are they gonna have outside storage?
Not at this time, nope.
That'd be a condition from the board.
That's not, we'd need a special permit or something. I'll come back to you guys if it's.
Well, they didn't have one up there on the, uh, on the East Bridgewater line, and they'd have boats outside and campers stored outside. And, and on the second one that we, uh, were reviewing there, um, right in the center of town, it was definitely, uh, not gonna be agreed upon that it was, there wasn't gonna be any outside storage as far as antique cars or second cars or boats or campers or anything like that, 'cause I know it wasn't included on the one up by East Bridgewater. And they've had, they've had problems up there.
Understood. So, that'll be part of the condition, is part of the approval.
Outside lighting, all everything?
Yeah, we'll do a lighting plan.
Yeah.
Just security-wise.
Yeah.
It's a good thing you're not across this town line, because then you'd be dealing with dark sky.
Yep. Well, we'll hood these anyway. You don't need to send it up everywhere. You, you need to light down.
Yeah.
For the doors and the.
Other, uh, bathroom facilities in each of the buildings or just the main office?
Just the main building and.
So, where's the septic going?
Right here.
Okay. Couldn't see that far.
Yep, no, I, no problem. I gave you little plans too. What else do I have? Really, I think we've, uh, you know, the allowed use was a big thing just to make sure we had that. Um.
You talk about, is there gonna be, based on my just eyeballing a lot?
Yeah.
There isn't anything less accurate than eyeballing elevations. Um, it looks like you're gonna need a fair amount of fill in there, right?
So, we might have sixty-seven here, course map sixty-three.
'Cause that first hundred feet, which is gonna predicate what the rest of it's gonna be, because you're not gonna be able to change it unless you step it down, but.
Right. So, yeah, the roads that, yeah, I suppose that's what we would do, right? Just we'd have to, and actually that would help with the stormwater. So, I have to do some test holes. I, I have some from Webby, but we'll need to confirm, you know, the elevation. See, my contours don't have, uh, they didn't print elevation. So, sixty-seven, sixty-four, sixty-three. It's looking like it all goes downhill this way. What's, so, is there a variance of waiver process for that two-foot elevation? I know I've dealt with that years and years ago. You have to be a certain distance from the road, right, to not have to be two feet above?
Every, anything within a hundred feet has to be two feet above the crown of the road.
Is it two feet or two and a half?
I think it's two feet. Yeah, yeah, I think it's two feet.
That's the top foundation.
Yes.
I know people finding that out the hard way.
Yeah.
Yep. I mean.
I mean, that's something I'm hoping that the zoning bylaw review committee takes a look at. That was, it was one of those reactionary bylaws twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago.
Yep.
Had no problem. Let's get a bylaw.
How many stories?
They're all single.
They're all single, including the office?
Y- yes.
How many units?
To be determined, not sure.
Yeah, depends on how you lay them out, ten foot, five foot.
Yeah. Yeah, five, tens, twenties.
Yeah.
Depends on, um, what the market.
But all seven buildings will be a single floor?
Yes. Yeah, it's tough to, um, on that two-foot above the crown.
Yeah, it's hard to work with.
Sometimes the, the hill goes down.
Yeah, right, right, oh, yeah, yeah.
And like you said, these are long buildings, so it'll be difficult. So, stepping them might have to happen there. And that's not that difficult to do on, on buildings like this.
What's not difficult?
To step. It's gonna cost more. Um.
Yeah, but they're supposed to bring it in film.
Yes.
And compacting it and.
And if we're doing that, water's gonna run along down with them and I won't need as many catch basins on a long, flat stretch. 'Cause if it's long and flat, I have to pitch it, you know, one and a half percent and not make it like a hole between each building. You have to kind of balance that.
Have, have you got an impervious, um, calculation?
Um, I have the, so I took a look at the bylaw. So, there's a max percent of lot coverage.
Impervious coverage, right?
So, it says maximum percentage of lot coverage including accessory buildings. And I looked in the zoning bylaw and there is no definition of max coverage. So, when it referred to accessory buildings.
I thought it was twenty-five percent.
I thought, I thought, it is twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
So, building-wise, we're at eleven and a half percent. I did not look at impervious, because I.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, it's been a while since I've looked at that whole section until maybe talking out of school here.
Yep.
Is the whole place gonna be paved?
Yes.
That, well, that's what made me think of it. I think there's something in the bylaw about impervious.
Yeah. I'll word search that and I'll check with the, um, zoning enforcement officer. And then I also saw that the, um, lot area is to be calculated from the upland area.
Eight forty percent has to be uplands?
So, we make.
Contiguous uplands.
Yeah, contiguous upland, but, so, this is a wetland line here. The whole site's seven acres. This is half of that, probably. So, that's not an issue.
I'm just trying to think of things that.
Yeah, that's why we, we, you know, we appreciate that. That's exactly why we're here. Um, you guys look at all, look at these regularly.
Maybe you're making a major proposal.
And like I said, like I asked earlier, you may have even seen something that came through here a year ago that we wouldn't have any idea.
Not, not in that area.
Yep.
I, I, just out of curiosity, are you folks, do you operate one now someplace else, or is this?
No, I, uh.
The, be the first, okay. Do you, do you plan on doing it in phases, or are you gonna?
Uh, no, I would like to do it once.
Do, do, do put it all up at once, okay.
I know I was trying to permit an expansion on one in Plimpton and they don't want it, so, um, they'll get one on the Town Line instead.
Dealing with the planning board?
Yes.
No comment.
Landscape plan? Do we need significant landscape on something like this? Probably just need to landscape the front to have a break there. There's obviously not a lot of opportunity to look green over here in here.
That would, that must be for everybody, but I assume the front, I assume those are grass patches out front?
Yep.
Front of the buildings?
Yep, or at least landscaped.
Yeah.
Uh, zero, low maintenance.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's in the right place in town.
Yeah, well, see, that's what I was just gonna say, where it's industrial.
Yeah.
It, you know, have required abrevities and whatnot, you know, blocking residents, but you don't have any residents, you know?
Right. So, make the front look good, 'cause we have a good island out front, kind of break up.
Remake the signs, where's that going?
To be determined, but I would think it's over at the entrance and in front of them, maybe on the building.
You, you probably saw our bylaws, Richard.
Yep.
It's a little lengthy.
We have more pages on signs than we think.
I see that in a lot of towns. Um, sign companies are actually pretty good at reading them. They're, they're big business and surprised how much those signs cost and how well they do reading the zoning bylaws.
Well, they don't wanna make a sign that can't be put up, that is not in anybody's best interest.
Absolutely. Actually, I had to ask for variance for signs in Rockland. It was very strange owing to the shape and the photography of the sign. But the buildings were so big and their sign requirements made them so small, it was ludicrous. So, they.
What's the other dotted line? One's the wetlands? No, right there. Keep going towards me.
The red one. So, there's a.
Right there. See it right there? See the two? I thought that one marked, and the one to the right of that marked the wetlands. The dotted, the black dotted one.
So, this is that wetland out here. Now, see, oh, this one.
Yeah, and then the one to.
That's the hundred-foot buffer.
Okay, and then, and then the dotted, yes, what's that one?
That's the fifty. So, uh, conservation is a fifty-foot no disturb zone.
Right.
So, we showed that and basically that's where we decided to kind of stop these buildings. The, uh, once I do the stormwater analysis and figure out how much room I have here, then we'll push this back or leave it where it is.
You're, you're, some of the building setbacks are just barely on the fifty-foot setback and.
Yep.
You know, you're gonna have to certify all that afterwards, so you might wanna leave yourself a little cushion there.
Yeah, we typically, we typically do, um, for the concept plan and.
Yeah, you know, I, I understand, I'm just.
So, uh, yeah, we will go out, survey, get control and know what our tolerances are, but we usually build in some safety factor there.
I permitted a, a job once where the property owner decided he was gonna stake it out himself. Then he had to go buy a piece of property from his neighbor.
Oof, we have a surveyor do it anyway.
Yeah, it, uh, when it comes to tolerances, if you're out in the middle of something, that's one thing.
Right. Yeah, we, we typically build those in for all of these. Um, so I guess site plan review, we'll just pop through these real quick. The plan was, we're seeking and, uh, which I'll seek to show a reasonable use of the site in accordance with the following criteria: protection of adjoining premises, there's nobody on either side, convenience of safety vehicular, pedestrian traffic movements. Um, we discussed that a bit, but as far as pedestrians, there really isn't any. They're gonna drive up to your door and stop.
Just stopping at that for one minute again. Did we understand, or did I understand, we're gonna have one entrance in?
Yep.
And, and then an entrance out?
This, um, did, we were just gonna do the one, yeah. This is where I initially put it and I, and, um, they asked that I revise it, but I hadn't gone to it until tonight, and this was gonna take too much effort to cut off.
Oh, okay, alright, so that.
'Cause I thought you said something about fire equipment coming in and out.
So, we're gonna move the entrance to here, but, um, this is initially where I had proposed it, but it's the same curves and, you know, looking in and out.
Okay. It's just looking at it visually, it looks like we.
Yeah, the intention is to step the one, they only have one main gate to secure.
Okay.
Adequacy of the methods of controlling surface water. I have nothing for you on that yet, so. Uh, off-street loading, operation vehicles. Uh, we have plenty of room to maneuver and get people, um, out of the way and keep the circulation. Functional aesthetic compatibility of development with the existing or allowed, uh, on adjacent properties. It's pretty quiet over here. And it's industrial zone. Uh, maybe you'll see more buildings in this area.
What's the zoning on the other side of the Town Line? Is it residential?
It's commercial, it's industrial.
Light manufacturing?
For short, for short distance, very short distance.
Yes.
'Cause at some point there, there's some residential to it.
It might be.
Hard to get residential over there. The soils are marginal.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 definitely marginal.
So. You want, this is where you wanna have low flow uses and, um, but if that's what the zone.
Yeah. Yeah.
Allows, that's what you get. Residential privacy doesn't apply. Adequacy of the site for any expansion allowed by applicable density standards. Uh, there's no expansion for this. Basically, we're trying to utilize the whole lot.
Yeah.
I, I think that's referring to if like a, a, an adjacent development that's blocking it off. Hmm, I don't know, here. Yeah, I think that's really a spoke.
Yeah, that's about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Did, did we come up with a consensus about whether we need a traffic study? Would, would we recommend one or not? It just, you know, the consensus without saying that that's gonna happen. We don't have the full board.
I could, yeah, and I, I could give you a trip generation. I'm, I'm not a, I, I'm not gonna be able to do, uh, I'm not a traffic engineer. I can't do a full traffic impact assessment, do vehicle counts and all that.
I mean, it's gonna be light. I, I think I'll concede that.
Right. So, the, the traffic impact assessments cost about eight thousand bucks.
In the industrial zone, is he gonna need a special permit?
For?
Storage.
That's gonna be the zoning enforcement officer's.
Yeah, so we vetted that out. It's not allowed use in the industrial zone. Um, it's.
Was it under by special permit? Isn't that what we made the landscaper, the argument being?
Because it was commercial.
Yeah, it was in the business.
Industrial, light industrial, I think you can store it, right?
Yeah, you can store, you can, you can store in, in, unless it's been changed in the last ten years. You can store in the industrial. But he was in business. And he, he was storing his own materials, but, you know.
Then why did he need a special permit? I thought we were going round and round about storage and storage and.
What district was that in? I actually looked at those plans, yeah. So, I think it was in the.
Yeah, it was, that was three.
Outside storage.
Yeah.
In the business district.
Yeah.
Was a special permit and you had to show there wasn't, uh, it didn't, wasn't nuisance from dust, odor, um, et cetera. This is all inside storage.
Wasn't inside storage.
I do have an email from the, uh, zoning enforcement officer. I can attach to the application if.
Yeah, but that's always a good idea, put a zoning determination on it.
Yep. Get the language soft. I think he said, some, he, he agrees in some soft language. I forget what it was, but that's basically what he said.
The only other thing I was thinking of, maybe something to think about is, well, that's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit there on a state highway. I, I know you said that's really good and wide, but you have moving vans and big trucks, you know, box trucks coming in and out. Let's put, I, I, I would think the wide are the better, you know, for easier access.
Yeah, if you can get somebody off the road, wow, it's not even that warm.
We do a wide.
It's got landing gear.
Yeah, the thing's pretty big.
It's a big one.
Okay.
Kind of wider entrance, like no problem. We go to thirty feet easily, this, a ton of frontage.
Yeah. Yeah, the quicker you can get somebody off the road, the better.
Yep. I agree. We, I fight that in a lot, you know, towns. We want it wide, but then there's a provision that you can't make it that wide. The max width is twenty-four feet or something, so. And when it's not explicit, I don't know. So, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
That's.
You're, you're assuming we know, but of course.
Yeah. Well, your preference is to have a wide one and you have a reason for it, and we're, we're on board with that. Makes sense. I guess, uh, follow-up on the traffic impact assessment, any?
I couldn't, I wouldn't see the sense in throwing it again, though. No, neither do I. I think if you come up with a plan, it makes sense.
Okay. And if that changes, 'cause there's other board members, it is what it is.
Yeah.
But at least we have it ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing is if we come, you know, if we submit, it's, and then we need to do one, it's, you know, eight thousand dollars and time that we'll have to, you know.
Figure it out.
Yeah. It is what it is, so. Um, okay.
Uh, all right.
Great. Appreciate you guys coming out.
Anything?
No, it's good.
Fine, good.
Okay, awesome. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two.
Alright. Alright, so I guess we're gonna move on. Um. Meeting minutes for November sixteenth, December seventh, and January fourth. You wanna take them one at a time? Can we take them all at once?
Well, I think there was an extension asked on, on a couple of the months there from last meeting to give some more time to it, and that member's not here. I, I.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Goodnight.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
I, I didn't find any changes, deletions, or corrections.
No, really, we're fine, I mean.
But you might as well do them one at a time, I guess, then, why not?
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of November sixteenth.
First of all, uh, who, who's, should we list the who's voting on this? Just so, uh, I mean, did we make?
Well, you know, that's the one thing I did not, well, probably more than one thing. I didn't mention that there was only three members here this evening. Uh, we have two members not present. Um, Amy Troop is not present. Uh, we have two members not present. Um, Amy Troop is not present and Brendan Elliott, who uh. Just had some surgery on his two breaks, I think it was, on his leg, so he's uh, but he did say he'd be here at the next meeting. Uh, so present are, is Bert Gainer, Rick Murray, and myself, Tom Milius. Okay, so having said that, we have three members and we do have quorum.
Right, then I'll make a motion to accept the uh, the minutes as presented for November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Moved and seconded to accept the meeting minutes of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I'll make a motion to accept the uh, the minutes of the December seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-three meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the meeting minutes for December seventh, two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous.
And I'll make a motion to uh, accept the final uh, minutes of January fourth, two thousand twenty-four. As presented.
Moved and seconded to accept the meeting minutes for January fourth, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Uh, I think she had signatures on those. Did she leave us a signature page? It's the agenda.
They were in that package that you had given me. Last page or wherever it was.
I assume they kept track of it, huh?
Rick, did I give them to you?
No.
No. They're here, they have to be here. Oh, suddenly uh. There we go. They're just down, a little further down, that's all.
Here we go. Did you miss it?
No, it's four or five pages. There's this one. She didn't staple them together, so. This one's stapled. I had a signature page on it. Yes, oh.
Yep.
Okay.
You still signing if you're not present?
Oh, you weren't here?
No.
Oops, sorry.
Bert wasn't.
Oh, Bert missed that meeting.
Which one?
Can't sign this one.
Oops.
Nice going, Bert. So, good catch. We'll have to save those for the next meeting.
Alright.
Okay, so we got this one, we got this one. And we'll have to redo this one.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. We got a couple of them, got a couple of them done. Alright, the only other thing left is, well, before I say that, go to page two, no. Correspondence. We had correspondence from the Middle Borough Planning Board, legal advertisement for retreat lot. Special permit on Wall Street and Elk Road in Middle Borough. Town of East Bridgewater, we had decisions for twenty-eight and eighty-eight Chestnut Street. Decision for twenty carries landing East Bridgewater. Decision for fifteen Chestnut on E- in East Bridgewater, decision for one forty Laurel Street in East Bridgewater. And that is.
I'll make a motion to accept uh, the interments, the correspondence received from Middle Borough and East Bridgewater.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And uh, the only other thing I just wanna ask, did everybody get in to sign the uh. Uh, letters?
Yes, I did.
So we're all set, okay. Alright, I guess just a motion to adjourn.
Oh, excuse me, uh, don't you have an extra business line on that, that memo, that that agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
An extra business line?
Oh, other business, I mean.
Other business.
That was not anticipated, but did it come to our attention?
Well, uh. My name is Joe Bagley, my wife Monica, I have Pat Scholane, Tom, we know each other.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Sure. Uh, we were here, we were on the agenda up until very recently and nobody had notified us that we were removed from it.
Oh, I, that, that's an error on our part then, because that meeting got postponed.
Correct, to today.
No, actually got postponed again. Uh, apparently you didn't get notified and for that.
You did not get notified.
For 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 that, I I I apologize. I don't know why you didn't get notified.
Okay.
It had to do with getting the attorneys here.
Right, and the contractor as well.
And the contractor, the person engaged in the lot.
Yeah.
So we've been trying to, our attorney wanted us to, in fact, make sure that we had mentioned it to their attorney. Cause it isn't proper to discuss the property without letting the applicant, applicant, but the person we're gonna talk about informed.
Okay.
And I think Danielle said, may have mentioned something about trying to confirm something with their attorney.
She's been having difficulty, yeah.
Three times, I think, she said she had sent.
For the contractor's attorney?
Uh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And and has got no response yet, so uh, we couldn't put them on the agenda, you know, if uh, that that was the whole point of postponing.
Yeah, and then we had a problem with our attorney in terms of scheduling, so we were trying to schedule everybody, so it's now, because nobody can make it. I think it's March, the first March meeting, which I I. Do I have that date here? Oh, this is twenty-three, I don't have twenty-four. Would be the first Thursday in March, whatever that, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
First Thursday in March is what, the seventh?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Oh, sounds right. I didn't recognize her by the way, or I would have said to you. What are you doing?
Quite alright, I've been quite a while.
I thought you were just here for the entertainment.
Uh, just very quickly, just so you know what it's about.
The first. The first.
The first is the first?
I got March first is, oh, no, no, you're right. It's the seventh, you're correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we've had a very, as you know, uh, we built our house down there in Paschulane back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, and we've had a very difficult time trying to get the road finished. And uh, we're at the point now where we've been chasing this now for over sixteen years. And every time we come to one of these meetings, it seems to get kicked down the lane, further and further and further. Uh, our neighbor Tina Kenyon has been on this quite a bit, trying to get something to happen. Um, the uh, I don't wanna get into too much detail here, but you should have received the letter that we sent to the town back in September. Regarding this and regarding what our concerns are, what our questions are, and what kind of, where we stand at this particular point. We've heard nothing from anyone.
This has been kicked down the road since I've been on the board. We used to be every single meeting.
Yeah.
Paschulane, every single meeting, uh, no new information.
I've been here a half a dozen times myself.
Yeah, and at least didn't they, correctly for long, didn't they come into some kind of agreement with the contractor and then that all got thrown out the window for whatever reason?
I wanna be careful that I don't talk too much about this without them here. I did do some research and I found some of the materials that were presented way back. And the compromise kind of thing.
Yes, I thought there was.
Yeah.
There was a covenant.
The, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the thick pavement, another coat of pavement or something.
Yeah, and and there was a proposal that uh, the planning board uh.
Well, where we're standing.
Waives some of the, or moderate some of the requirements to get the project done.
And he did start it, and he did fix some of the road that he had dug up. He he covered, you know, he put the pavement around those, cause even your plow guys, thank God, he plowed.
Yeah, but it was sticking way up.
But, you know.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, the drainage area that we have, he has pulled brush, he's pulled brush and they're piled. Now, they've been piled there for two or three years now. It is an eyesore. We come to dry weather, it's gonna be a fire hazard. Um, and it, you know, it's just diminishing the whole property.
What what did you pull the brush up for? I mean, why?
It was in the, it was in the drain, in the retention.
Yeah, it was in the agreement. It was.
Oh, so he started anyway.
Under goodwill, the drainage basins are on our property. And uh, uh, so what Mr. Paquette did was, uh, you know, in an effort to show goodwill. He came in, he pulled up a lot of brush because we were complaining that it was, you know, unkept. The town was supposed to maintain that area. They have not. The town hasn't touched it since we moved in here. Uh, so he went in and pulled up a lot of brush. In anticipation of taking it out of there and cleaning up the area, something happened between him and the town or him and whoever was he was dealing with at that time. And he pulled the plug and just left everything there. So now, we're forced with either uh, paying out of our own pockets and have all that area removed. And cleaned up, um, which we feel no need to have to do, so.
Well, I I think, enough to interrupt you, but I'm trying to be careful here not to say too much.
That's right.
I I I I think the intent of the planning board is to get this done.
Mm-hmm.
I know that I've talked to the town administrator. He's anxious to get it done. We've got permission to use attorney so that we can get this thing all resolved. I think the planning board, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I can speak for myself. Is looking for a compromise here so we can get this done for you and just be done with it, period, and get it over with.
Yeah, cause the frustrating level is getting.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 I, as far as, I believe that as long as the. Others' side is amenable to doing something and we can work something out. But that's about all I I wanna feel comfortable saying.
And that's, and that's fine, that's fine. Uh, that's more answers than we've gotten in fifty years, so uh, so I'm pleased with that. So you're telling me that we're on the agenda for the the March seventh meeting?
Yeah, yes, uh, well, but make sure you get confirmation of that, because what we're trying to do is get the attorneys. So if we can't get confirmation that. The owners or contractor or whoever is not, is gonna be here, uh, then we're gonna get advice as to whether we can proceed without it.
Okay, very well. Thank you for your time, Joe.
Okay.
Sorry, we didn't mean to ignore you tonight. I thought you were here for the other thing, yeah.
But then, like I said, I didn't recognize you, so.
Well, I'll spend, again, it's been a very long, you were actually the inspector on our.
Right, right, right.
So, okay, thank you very.
Sorry, alright.
Uh, in the event that you don't have that letter that we sent and you.
Well, I'm sure she has it. I I know I.
If not, please have her get in touch with us.
I'm I'm confident I looked at it because I actually went back and looked up and got copies of the covenant and a lot of the other stuff. Just just to kind of catch up, cause it's been so long since I've had any dealings with it.
Sure, okay. Alright, well, thank you again.
Alright, yeah, have a good night. Did we vote to adjourn? No.
No.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. We're adjourned. Good night, everybody.